Okay, this September 7th meeting of the school committee will come to order. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
I am here.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardelo.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria. Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Ms. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Panerisi. Ms. Sarni. Ms. Dinah Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here. Nine members present, we have a quorum, can you please all rise and lift the flag?
To the republic for which is stand, one nation, under God, and for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we move on to the next piece of business, the mayor did call, sends his request that he'll be missing tonight's meetings for personal matter. All members are present in the room today, therefore, we are able to take, you know, voice votes, stand up. Everything does not have to be a roll call vote, because all members are present here today, no one is on this call remotely. So, but we can move on then with that, to Roman number three.
Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from September 7th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second. Second.
Okay, motion is made in seconds to accept the minutes as written in place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moves, the motion carries. Item number four, please, Roman numeral four.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to open up for public comment, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moves, we have now are open for public comment. Ms. Leston, has anybody signed up to call in?
No, we have no one in queue.
Okay, there's nobody in the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second to close public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moves, you're closed public comment. Roman numeral five, please.
Roman numeral five is the superintendent's report, and we're going to start with the superintendent's update, as usual. Alright, so good evening, everyone here, and everyone joining us at home. Thank you so much for tuning in tonight. Today marked the start of our fourth week of the school year, so the district is operating at full speed and capacity. And as a result, we are very busy and have a lot to cover tonight. So tonight's report features updates about various happenings throughout the district, as well as important information about vaccine rates, upcoming vaccine clinics, and COVID testing. We will talk about our fall sports season, our ESER survey, a successful fundraiser for one of our community partners, and public service announcements that we've created to inform families about critical federal nutrition assistance. I'll also be providing an overview of the assessments we're administering across the EPS in order to get a firm sense of where students are, what academic areas they need help with, and how we need to approach our educational strategy throughout 2021, 2022. Before we begin, I would like to remind our students and families that there is no school tomorrow, September 21st. All of our buildings will be closed for professional development for teachers and staff, and for voting, which is something I will also discuss in detail later. So we are currently holding Get to Know Your School events at all of our buildings. So these events encourage parents and guardians to meet administrators and teachers, and learn about some of the essential elements of their students' education. We held preschool nights on Tuesday, September 7th, at the Adams, and Thursday, September 9th, at the Webster Extension. More than 50% of enrolled pre-k families attended. Family liaisons and EHS student ambassadors were on hand at both schools to help our families. Attendees were given translated copies of a Welcome to the EPS Preschool Program letter, which includes essential information and a COVID-19 student screening tool. Families got to tour the classrooms, where our teachers gave presentations about basic policies and class routines. School snack examples were also provided, and parents and guardians were given an overview of Footsteps to Brilliance, which is an early education literacy solution that students and families can utilize in school and at home. And most importantly, teachers helped participants connect to Class Dojo, which is a direct and highly effective way to communicate information in multiple languages. So we are pleased to report that 100% of our Adams families are connected to Dojo, while 97% of our WebX families are connected. Feedback was very positive, and families definitely expressed a lot of gratitude for the chance to be able to visit classrooms, talk to teachers, and ask questions in multiple languages. Head teachers Lori Stokes and Michelle Bosco also reported that the majority of families were very supportive of the current state mandate requiring face coverings inside our schools. And thus far, we've actually seen that that has been very successful, and people, everybody seems to be wearing masks in our schools. The Caverian School also hosted its first back-to-school night on Wednesday, September 15th. Families were invited to the front and back playground areas of the school to meet with teachers and learn about what their child's school day looks like. So families were invited to sign their children into the gym for games and activities organized by our PE staff. And to mark the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Month, Caverian interventionists invited our younger students to the cafeteria for storytime featuring books by Latinx authors. And the Funk Phenomenon salsa dance squad performed an energetic routine for everyone in attendance. Community-based organizations such as East Boston Community Health Center, Elliott Family Resource Center, Sky Chefs, and Everett Community and Family Coordinated Engagement were also there to support our families and share information about resources and job opportunities. Finally, the Caverian offered free slush raffle prizes of Crayola art supplies, Caverian t-shirts, EPS lunch bags, and water bottles, all as giveaways provided by the Caverian School PTO. And we will be holding more of these events, and I'll provide further updates about them as they occur. We are up and running with our slate of fall athletics, including full schedules and fans. So the Crimson Tide is fielding teams in football, cross-country volleyball, field hockey, golf, and boys and girls soccer. So we have approximately 360 student athletes playing a fall sport this year, which is very exciting. I did have the pleasure of being in Westwood on Friday, September 10th, for our first football game of the season, which was a very exciting game, and my first ever since taking on this role, which still seems hard to believe. My family joined me, and we were amongst a large and enthusiastic contingent from Everett, including our cheerleaders, the marching band, and several teachers and staff members who watched our team triumph over Zavarian. This past Friday, we improved to a 2-0 with a 38-6 win over Somerville. One of our touchdowns actually belonged to Matthew La Monica, which is the son of a school committee member, Joe La Monica, so congratulations to him and Mr. La Monica. Other highlights of the first week of action included a win and a tie for our boys soccer team, with the win coming over reigning Greater Boston champions Revere High, a 1-2 finish by Olivia Lovad and Suzanne Maharjen to lead the girls' cross-country team to a win over Lynn English. In the boys' meet versus Lynn English, Everett's Wesley Monpremier took first place overall. The debut of first-year girls' soccer coach Cheryl Steves, a 1-1 tie for the field hockey team versus Malden. Our volleyball team is working very hard to secure its first win this season, and our JV team has three wins, and our freshman squad is undefeated. And finally, the Greater Boston League's middle school season begins this week. We are fielding teams in baseball, softball, and cross-country, and we are thrilled that the EPS can team up with other members of the GBO on offering sports for middle schoolers, as those are grade levels where we are looking to create more enrichment opportunities moving forward. So we held a Jeans Day on Friday, September 10th, to support the Everett Haitian Community Center in its ongoing efforts to help the victims and families of the August 14th earthquake in Haiti. The effort was initiated and organized by our community engagement manager, Jeanette Velez. Jeans Day do tend to be very popular, and this one was no different, and it was our pleasure to be able to present $1,935 to Reverend Merland earlier today. I just want to thank everyone in the district who participated, and a special thanks to our administrative assistants for collecting the money in all of our buildings. So I want to take a moment to remind parents, guardians, students, and staff members of the entire community that we are seeking input about how to best utilize the federal funds known as ESER. There are specific stipulations and guidelines about how to use these resources, but it is important to hear from the community about what big bucket areas they want to prioritize most, because that will help us inform our decisions and our strategy moving forward. The survey, which is available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole, is available under the recent news section on the homepage of our website. We also shared the survey directly with families last week, and as of Sunday morning, we have received more than 270 responses. And we hope to receive an influx of responses in the coming days as we send out reminders. The setup of the form is really straightforward. We just ask respondents to give us their top three priorities amongst general areas that might benefit from ESER funds, but that are also allowable under ESER funds, so it really takes only about two to three minutes. The next round of ESER funds will arrive next month. So we wanted to send out this survey at the beginning of the school year, even though I know it's a busy time for everyone, so that could inform the money that we receive. And again, thank you to everyone who's taken the time to give us their opinions. When we close the survey, we will tabulate the responses and present the findings here to you all at an upcoming meeting. As we have discussed in the past, students attending school in person are no longer eligible for PEBT benefits. The program temporarily created to replace meals during the pandemic while schools were closed. In lieu of PEBT, eligible families who are not enrolled in the SNAP program are encouraged to please enroll in SNAP. To help facilitate this effort, we have produced a short public service announcement on our website to help residents learn more about SNAP and how it provides critical food support to residents. The video is available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. And thank you to our family liaisons and our EHS TV crew for filming and producing these public service announcements. This slide shows that the city recorded 36 cases amongst residents under the age of 19 as of September 16th. Internally, the EPS has recorded 38 confirmed cases, and that includes students and staff as of 12:30 PM on Friday, September 17th. Since school started, we have had anywhere from one to four cases per day through this past Friday, with the exception of September 5th, when we didn't record any cases. To date, we have not had to make any changes to operations at any of our schools. We also track close contacts, which vary significantly from case to case. And as we did last year, we implore families to conduct safety checks of their students and err on the side of caution when symptoms such as fever, chills, cough, muscle aches, and fatigue are present. Here is an update on our vaccination statistics among our eligible school-age residents. So since our last meeting, we have seen a 2% increase in Everett in both age groups. As of September 14th, the percentage of individuals between the ages of 12 and 15 who are fully vaccinated is 66% in Everett, 71% across the state. 77% of 16- to 19-year-olds in Everett are vaccinated, which is actually outpacing the state percentage. Obviously, we do want to see these percentages climb upward, preferably at a fast pace, and there is the opportunity to make that happen in the coming weeks as we partner with the city and our other partners to host many vaccine clinics for our residents and our students and families. So speaking of those vaccine clinics, as we move through September and continue to balance traditional school days with the fact that COVID-19 is, you know, presenting challenges, it is obvious, but again, important to say that the vaccine is the best way for students and staff to stay safe and stay in school. So the city and its partners, including the Cambridge Health Alliance, are doing a tremendous job of making the vaccine easily accessible here in Everett. And in that light, we are pleased to announce that we will join the Cambridge Health Alliance, Tufts Health Plan, and the City of Everett in hosting a series of free Pfizer clinics every day next week at a different school. These will be held from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the following days and at the following schools. So on Monday, September 27th, there will be one at the Lafayette, on Tuesday, at the Caverian, Wednesday, at the Parlin, Thursday, at the Madeleine English, and Friday, October 1st, at the Whittier. Residents age 12 and over are eligible to receive the Pfizer vaccine, and students under the age of 18 do need consent from a parent or guardian. In addition, the Cambridge Health Alliance is holding a regular community vaccination clinic at Everett City Hall on Mondays from 3:00 to 6:30 PM. So these clinics will be held until November 15th, and the Pfizer vaccine again will be available to anyone 12 and older, and will be free of charge. So the state's vaccination figures are among the very best in the nation, and Everett's percentages are really very strong, which we are excited about. But again, and I can't keep stressing this enough, we do want to continue to nudge the percentages as high as we can. And we appreciate all of the support we've received from the state, the city, and our partners, and making sure that we provide plenty of opportunities for all of our students and families and residents to be vaccinated. So a critical part of the first part of the school year is the assessment process, which will allow our teachers in all grades to collect targeted math and literacy data from our students. The information is used to determine what standards to prioritize in our Tier 1 instruction, and how to group students in Tier 2 or intervention instruction. So this fall assessment cycle is being supported by a team of six teachers, who are our Intervention Success Team. These exemplary teachers are working with the Director of Remote Learning and Instruction and Augur to create win blocks for students in K-8 that leverage all the teachers in the building to provide intensive, small-group instruction in eight-week cycles. And again, win stands for "what I need." Over the summer, building leaders worked creatively to ensure that there were win blocks in our K-8 schedules, and that teachers have enough common planning time to analyze data and set goals for students. So to help facilitate this, for the first time, the EPS provided leaders with a scheduling tool from DNG Group, or DM Group, to make the process more efficient and adaptive to their specific building initiatives. In order to establish our win group priorities at the K-5 level, we're using Dibble's literacy assessments and Cadence's math assessments. Interventionists are managing the schedule. In addition, we administer iReady ELA and math assessments three times a year to help measure student growth and performance against grade-level standards. iReady is overseen by our building principals and assistant principals. Last year, Everett High School piloted a platform called Edmentum Exact Path, which is offered three times a year for grades 9 through 12 in math, reading comprehension, and literacy. It mirrors the iReady data cycle and offers us critical data on literacy and numeracy skills. So the program was very successful last year, even in the remote setting, or especially in a remote setting where we need that data, and EHS content leaders will be using it again this year to compile data and boost student achievement. So in addition to supporting student growth and performance, the four assessment platforms we use help building leaders to track what is called collective teacher efficacy, which refers to the ways in which educators can positively impact student learning by working as teams. And in that vein, I wanted to talk about our professional development for tomorrow. Tomorrow, as Everett goes through the polls and our schools are closed, our teachers and staff will take part in a full-day professional development. We have lined up a wide range of topics for our teachers, peer professionals, and staff members based on subject area, grade level, and general interest subjects. All staff will report to their buildings at 7:45 AM for breakfast and school-based professional development. Our individual morning sessions will run from 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM, followed by lunch, and our afternoon offerings from 12:30 to 2:45. Our K-3 teachers, including math and literacy interventionists, are participating in a series at the Parlin School in which participants self-select workshops in the morning, while the PM session is designed to help them meet their personal and team growth goals. So options include a course by renowned provider Greg Tang Math, strategy training for elementary students, advanced literacy instruction with Language Circle Enterprises, oral language development strategies, and a course focused on developing a common language and toolkit for social-emotional learning in the classroom. Our grade 4 to 8 teachers are participating in full-day intensive curriculum resource training centered around common unit planning with our content leaders. So this includes training in the StemScope Science System, which we're very excited about implementing in 21, 22. This was an opportunity that was made possible by a grant from the Massachusetts Life Center, and that was a competitive grant that we were awarded over the summer. StemScopes provides floor-to-ceiling hands-on equipment for regular science experiments across all of our schools. Our high school teams are participating in professional development directly connected to providing vigorous standards aligned and engaging content for all students. Content department heads will join curriculum experts to launch instructional FOCI and facilitate meaningful collaboration with teachers on lesson and unit plans. And for the first time, we surveyed our peer professionals and administrative assistants to find out what training they want on PD Day. So to that end, we are offering sessions on Aspen, which is our student management system, which is so important to our everyday work, as well as Google Suite. My applause to our team members who helped organize the PD Day. I think it's going to be a great day of learning for all of our staff. So we are excited to report that we have more than 744 students enrolled in the EPS September Enrichment Academy, which is the no-cost after-school program we've been offering at the Caverian, Lafayette, English, Webster, and Whittier schools. An additional 120 students are actually on the waitlist, which is a number we hope to reduce as we actively are seeking additional staff to increase capacity. Honestly, we were not planning for this level of success in enrollment, and we're using numbers from previous years extrapolated to include the three additional grades, 6 through 8. However, we are absolutely thrilled with this response. You know, in the past, I believe we've had around 400 students in K-5, and so this is a huge jump for programming. The Enrichment Academy is being staffed by our EPS personnel, which is a gigantic plus, and starting with the simple but invaluable fact that our staff know our students, and we provide students with a rotation of activities, including homework help, arts and crafts, socializing with peers, and other physical activities. So the breakdown of enrichment enrollment by school is 175 at the Whittier, 140 at the Parlin, 139 at the Lafayette, 111 at the English, 109 at the Caverian, and 70 at the Webster. So due to the success of our September program, we're actually now looking to extend it into October and maybe longer. Families will be receiving information soon, and there will be required, a little, only, there will be little required of families who are already signed up to extend into the program. Plus, this will also allow for us to have a seamless transition to our new after-school partner, Alphabet. Also, in speaking with Alphabet, to give you an update on that programming, we are working closely with them to complete a comprehensive list of licensing requirements, which include building and safety inspections, onboarding of staff, and the adoption of all necessary policies and procedures. And that is a process that is taking some additional time. Families can preregister through an easy online platform via the EPS and/or Alphabet websites, and we'll be working with families throughout this process. Since we are providing our own internal programming, we are confident that there will be no interruption in services. And just a quick update on one of our projects, couple projects that's occurring right now. In the late spring, the Everett School Committee voted to ask the city to look into replacing the roof at the Webster School Extension or the old Everett High School. So the city sought quotes this summer for the repairs. Based on the dollar value of those quotes, the city requested a waiver from the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance to proceed with an expedited repair procurement due to the need to be able to provide the schools with acceptable building conditions at an urgently needed location. So DCAM did approve that request, and the city did proceed to select a contractor to make the necessary repairs. I did want to let you know that the work has begun, and with the exception of a slight setback that we had this morning, we are slated to have that work finished in two weeks. The setback was because of water damage due to rain. So two classrooms, a corridor, and the kitchen area were impacted. However, we were able to move students to another location, and we've all, the city hired ServePro to complete the cleanup and water removal first thing this morning, and it's actually all been taken care of. And so we still anticipate that that will be completed on time. And at this point, I'll take any questions.
Questions, Superintendent? Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Superintendent. Less a question, but more, some of the feedback I've gotten is that parents really appreciate the, whether it be Class Dojo or an email, and that there's still that, that reach out. That was happening last year by necessity, it's continuing. So I just wanted to express my appreciation to the educators that have really, you know, latched on to best practices from a tough year. Families do appreciate that, and just getting a quick, you know, your child's doing great, it makes all the difference after a lot of, we talked a lot about the student anxiety, but I don't know that we recognize the parent anxiety after a year and a half of sending their children back into buildings, and you know, just those check-ins, and that assurance is very helpful to families. So you mentioned Class Dojo, and I just wanted to reiterate that that's really important, and the feedback's been very positive.
Okay, Ms. Cardelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Superintendent. Madam Superintendent, would you please give us an update on what we are doing and how we are doing it with the rapid testing for COVID testing in our schools, please?
That's actually the next item of business, and I have an update for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, remove my mask. And thank you, Superintendent, for the update. I'm actually glad that we.
I, are you muted?
I'm not muted.
No, okay.
You do have a mute feature.
One, two, three, sound. Passed, passed, passed. Oh, is it? Then it's my. How is it now? Better? Thank you. First, I'm glad that the Webster extension project has been, well, it's coming, it's going on right now. I had serious concerns about our kids and our staff in that building. But, and I want to thank the city for expediting this process to make this job done. My question is regarding, well, maybe you, you know what? I will hold my question, which is regarding COVID, for the next item that we present. My question will be regarding COVID and our students, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll hold on until the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you, Madam Superintendent. So what are ESER funds, like are there free money given to the city from the state? And will we continue doing these surveys in the future?
So yes, that is a great question. So these are emergency relief funds that are being provided to schools around the state that are coming from the federal government, and we have been approved for them for the next three years. And so we will continue to do these surveys in order to get feedback on how we should spend them year upon year. There are some, like with any money that comes in a, in an entitlement grant, that that money does come with. in an entitlement grant, that that money does come with some kind of stipulations. So some guidelines on what we can and can't spend it on. So we do have to be careful to spend it on again, those things that are providing emergency relief to our elementary and secondary students. That's what it stands for, Elementary and Secondary Student Emergency Relief Fund. So these are monies again that are coming to us because of COVID to be able to support us over the next three years as we recover. And so the the survey that everybody will be getting, that's why we kind of have a drop down menu. Because it really isn't like we could spend it on everything. So we wanted to give some guidelines on what we can spend it on and then people can rank what their top three priorities are.
And is this survey on the website or are we just sending it out in general?
So we put it up on the website. We've actually also been giving it out in hard copy at our Get to Know You events. But it is on our website. We did send out a blast to families. And we can also put it out again to make sure that we get feedback from our families and our students.
Thank you.
Okay, and if I can add just real quickly, the ESSR funds tend to fall into three buckets. Learning loss, after school programming and summer programming. So for example, the after school mission program that we started in September that we're going to continue through the transition of Alphabet, that's being funded to ESSR. So Ms. Murray?
So I had a couple of things that I wanted to address. The first is, given the high turnout for our in-house after school, I was wondering if it would be possible to seek the possibility of doing a pilot program for in-house. I don't want to step on Alphabet's toes or anything like that. But it should be would be nice if we could do all of our supports for our students ourselves and hire our own staff to do it. I'm not, I don't know if it's feasible. But given the fact that parents clearly like having their teachers running their after school programs, it looks like something we might want to think about maybe?
Absolutely, and that's why we are extending it. But I definitely agree. And what we're trying to figure out right now too is how sustainable is it for the full year? I think a lot of our staff, you know, definitely signed on for like a September, it's almost like an acceleration academy. So what we're trying to do too is gauge interest in could we like how sustainable is an internally run program? Would we be able to staff it month over month? Or is it something that we do in kind of these smaller spurts? Like a month enrichment academy and acceleration academy. But absolutely, and I kind of, we're kind of looking at this as our pilot, which is why we're sort of extending and exploring. And I said, we are definitely doing it into October, but that's why I kind of left it open. Because again, we want to be additive in our services. So for at least, at least this year, we'd love to be able to provide more options than less. So again, absolutely not to step on Alphabet's toes, but I think we're trying to provide a multitude of services to our our families and our students.
Thank you. My second question is about Edmentum, the high school testing. Is that all subjects? Is it math and literacy specific? Is it MCAS predictor? What kind of information are families going to get from these tests?
It's math and literacy specific. And I'm always cautious to say that anything is really MCAS predictive. Yeah, but yes, it does break down the the skills by standard so that you can determine where it is that we need to support our students. And we do know that that MCAS is standards aligned as well. So we're using this data again to be able to figure out where are the areas that we need to target support to our students. And I also will be providing, so this is sort of our initial introduction to it. But I do think it would probably be good for us to sort of bring the data, look at it. Again, this is data that we are putting far more stake into this year than the MCAS data from last year. So this is the data that's really going to be informing our instruction moving forward. So I'm happy to present updates on how the data is looking.
And are families going to get any information regarding this testing in terms of being able to assess their own children's learning loss or areas where they may want to need to to reach out and get support before the spring comes?
Absolutely, yes. So there are parent reports too for iReady as well. And so they are similar, or the reason we picked Edmentum is because it does have kind of a similar, you know, not only the data cycle similar, but they also have a similar interface with families.
Okay, thank you very, I'm just unfamiliar with that. I know iReady, we've been doing it for a while, but this one's new.
And new to us too, so we're still figuring out some of the functionalities, which is why I'd be happy to provide some more information on it.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for me.
Ms. Sunny?
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, are we finding more families signing up that new to the after school program? New coming into the city? Or it's free and?
That's actually a great question. We have not broken down the data like that. We definitely can. One of the things that we did look at is because we have, you know, 740 students and in the past we've had somewhere like a close to 400. But then you did, we did add in six to eight. So when you include six to eight, we did have 111 students, but that still doesn't account for all of the added interest. That being said, I mean, it is run by our own educators and it also is no cost. So it's not even a sliding scale. It's completely no cost to families. But we can absolutely, I think that's an interesting thing to look at to see who are the students who are taking advantage of the program.
Thank you, that'd be a good idea because I know in the past, we had a lot of families coming, students coming in from other cities using other addresses to take advantage of something free. And I'm not sure if this is offered to other cities as well or?
Not that I know of. So now I I see your point. So we can definitely look into that further.
Thank you.
And at 740 students, that's a little more than 10% of the student population. Ms. Lambert?
Sorry, just a secondary. So one thing I did want to add on and we've had conversations about it. But if we're going to have Alphabet serving K through five, if we can explore options, it may be the internally run is the six through eight and we can offer differentiated enrichment opportunities. And I think, I think there's a a need there and I think there's a want there for kind of that middle grade. Maybe they're not into athletics. Maybe it's something we can do as a STEM add-on or even a theater or art add-on. I think that, I think you'd see a lot of interest if we do something with those six through eight grades.
Yes, I think that's a great point. And we did put out the RFP for six through 12, but I agree with you that there's just as much that we could do internally, just like we do at the high school, we have clubs, we have, you know, a lot of extracurriculars. And how can we bring that down to six to eight? So yes, absolutely.
Any other questions we got in the superintendent's update? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So item number two of the reported the superintendent is an update on the test and stay program. And as you may remember, Sabrina Ferricano from local DPH did give us an update during our last meeting regarding the test and stay. But I did want to provide an update today as this is one of the questions that we are receiving most often from our families. So as a reminder, just about what the program is, EPS has been planning to implement a free and voluntary rapid testing program in conjunction with the city, the state and the company CIC. We do strongly encourage students and staff to give their consent to participate in this important safety mitigation strategy. We have sent out consent forms, they are available online. We're going to be doing another big push for consent forms again, so that we can get more people signed up for this great opportunity. The effort is part of what is being called the test and stay, which is designed to keep as many of our students in class for the maximum amount of time. So the testing initiative is meant to be used in two different instances. The first is symptomatic testing. So this is used when a student or a staff member is showing symptoms of COVID-19 during school hours. As some of the symptoms of the virus do look identical to other illnesses like the cold. But right now, what we're seeing a lot is allergies. And this test tells us whether a symptomatic person has COVID-19 or not. Results are available within 15 minutes. And if, you know, the student or staff has minimal symptoms and is negative, they can remain in school. Obviously, if they have, if they are very symptomatic and are sick anyway, we would definitely suggest that they go home. The second is testing that will also be provided to allow students who have had close contact in school with a person who tested positive for COVID-19 to remain in school if they're not showing symptoms. So instead of needing to quarantine and miss school, these students who are not showing any symptoms but may have been identified as a close contact will take the daily rapid test that takes 15 minutes, they'll take it every day for five days. And that way they can remain in school as long as the test results continue to be negative. The test is very quick, non-invasive nasal swab that is collected under the supervision of a fully trained individual. It does need to be done under a certified nurse. So we did start the testing program on September 13th. Currently, we have one to two representatives from Cataldo ambulance that are responsible for testing district wide. But they are only with us in the morning at the beginning of the day. So as of now, we are unable to test symptomatic students during school hours. So and as I'm sure you did the math, one to two representatives for the entire district wouldn't be enough, even if they were available all day. To give you a sense of what this is now looking like in practice, over the past week, we've tested two symptomatic students at the Caverian. We've tested 13 close contacts at the Caverian, eight close contacts at the WebEx and 11 close contacts at EHS. None of those tests yielded a positive result, which means all of those students were able to stay in school. But during that same time period, we could not test 56 symptomatic students and they had to be sent home. Obviously, we want and need to make big strides with our testing initiative as quickly as we possibly can. And I think we can all agree that we need to provide testing for our students so that we can keep them in school, especially after the year that they had last year. Plus, it would be a shame if we could not take advantage of what is a cost free opportunity that is being provided to the, by the state to all districts in Massachusetts. So, you know, we definitely feel on the EPS leadership team that it is our obligation as a school system system to explore and exhaust every avenue to make this happen for them. And I wanted to let you know that that is what we will be working on in the next couple, in the coming days. We hope to actually work directly with the city nurses who work in our schools as a potential option for providing testing. And again, we're going to exhaust that option and any others that may be available to us.
Ms. Cadello, did you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the update. I'll be watching, I'm sure you'll let us know when it's in full active gear and who's actually doing it. If it's our school nurses or CIC or whomever, but thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next would be Mr. Bowles and then after that, Ms. Sunny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, at our last meeting, you kind of touched on this already Superintendent. But I had a few constituents who actually reached out to me asking this question regarding the close contact kids that we are sending home. So how long do they have to stay at home? And second, are we sending them homework or something to do at home? They're just home and not doing anything because they can't be in school. I remember in our last meeting that you mentioned that DESI, I mean, they are marked as absent because DESI was trying to figure out what to do. But it's not the EPS fault that they receive, they are they are absent from home, right? I mean, from from school. But how long do they stay home? And during that time, are they getting anything, any homework or bringing with them anything to do at home? And that perhaps is even valid, even though they are not in the classroom?
Yes, so that is a great question. So it does vary from student to student based on whether or not they're vaccinated as far as the quarantine period. So every, everybody who is a close contact is contacted directly by our health coordinator and also receives a letter to let them know exactly what date that they can return. And again, it depends on on whether or not they are vaccinated or not. As far as the schoolwork, yes, we are now one to one with Chromebooks. So students should be able to take the Chromebook home, be able to get get their assignments. You know, everything is is being provided. Again, we're not providing synchronous instruction, if that's what you're asking. But they do have access to, you know, like their online platform is their work, they can be emailed assignments. So they can still keep up that way. And if there are any parents who are concerned or feeling like they are not getting the work, that they can just reach right out to their teacher who will be able to provide them with all of the assignments.
So but there are assignments that we are giving to those kids now you are to do home.
Right, because they are home, right, for a significant period of time.
All right. That was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sunny.
Thank you. You mentioned Cataldo was only doing in the morning only?
Yes, currently they do not have a lot of capacity either. And so we are just working within the capacity that they have.
We, I know roughly, we have about 10 nurses in the city.
So yeah, we have, yeah, roughly, roughly one to school, to each school.
Are we going to be looking to ask to hire more nurses to help them because?
So we actually, or the city, because just to clarify for everyone, the, our nurses, our school nurses are city employees. They're actually hired through the city, their negotiations and contract are all run by the city. So yes, I know that they have been actively working on hiring nurses. I believe they have actually on boarded some nurses. And again, they're hiring not only for the city but also for the schools. But I think there, you know, there is a shortage of nurses applying for these positions. But I do know that they have them, they have them posted and they're actively looking.
Okay. On the nurses, I know they're the, are they the ones doing the monitoring and tracking and?
No, at this time, they are currently not, that's done by our health coordinator. She does work with the nurses, but we have one person who is actually doing all of that for the district.
Okay. Are we allowed to use the ESSR money at all to hire nurses?
So I think the question isn't about whether or not we can fund nurses, it's whether we can find nurses. So we have the funds, like we, we pay charge backs for nurses. So we pay for a certain amount of nurses to the city every year. And and so they're, they're working to make sure that we're fully staffed on nurses. So we have the funds to, you know, we already set those aside every year. Whether those positions are filled or not, we actually pay the city. And and so it's really, we could certainly add nursing physicians. And that's actually something that we have been considering is could we add nursing physicians that are school specific, what would that look like? But again, our, the concern is being able to staff those positions, is being able to identify nurses. Because I know the city is actively working on it.
Right. I know that we can, a lot of them, you can hire per diem because a lot of them work at, you know, hospitals and stuff. And maybe they might want to come in, come in per diem and help and assist the schools.
Yes, so we actually are exploring that too, not just for, for testing, but also for like field trips, for example. Because if you have a field trip, you need to to have a nurse go on that field trip if you have a student who requires it. And then you don't have a nurse at the school. So we are trying to explore how we can hire per diem nurses. So definitely that is something that we're exploring.
The other, is Cataldo looking to hire as well more staffing to be able to assist in the afternoons as well?
So those are really more questions for local DPH since they are working with CIC and Cataldo. I know that, you know, again, all of these different organizations are doing their best to recruit, you know, more providers to be able to do all of the vaccinations, all of the testing that's required in all of the different locations that's being provided. But I can certainly ask Sabrina and get back to you.
Okay. And the other question I just have is, are we looking into remote learning for the students that are being sent home and being home for several weeks and maybe having specific teachers doing that only?
So unfortunately, because of the DESI mandate, it is not being counted as instructional minutes. That doesn't mean it's not, you know, great practice, but it would be something that we would have to bargain with the union. And it, and and since it's not actually counting for instructional minutes, I think what we're trying to focus on is just making sure that the students have work provided to them that may be asynchronous.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lewis?
So in regards to like confirmed cases, some schools usually give out letters and they're like. Um, so in regards to like confirmed cases, some schools usually give out letters and they're like titled tier one, two and three. So I was wondering if you could possibly explain like the difference between them, like in regards to being contacted with someone who had COVID.
Absolutely. So the tier one letter is just for, um, everybody who is at, um, the school. So that doesn't mean you're a close contact or, or we're even in a shared activity. The tier two letter is for somebody who is in a shared activity or shared classroom, but was not identified as a close contact. So not within, uh, the six feet of the student. So again, we're doing seating charts and all of that to make sure that we're able to contact trace and figure out who would be identified as a close, close contact. So if you get a tier two letter, that means your child was not, uh, close, identified as a close contact, but they may have been in either a classroom or, you know, on the field, you know, whether if it for athletics with somebody who did test positive. The tier three letter is for those who are identified as close contacts. And they also receive direct phone calls first because we actually work with them to see when was the last time they were in the building. You know, how are they vaccinated? Are they not? So how long will they need to be staying out? Are they symptomatic? Are they not? Because all of those things kind of play into, uh, the decision that, that's made. And then we also now have an additional letter, which is the tier three close contact letter for vaccinated individuals. So we now we have two different tier three letters, one for a close contact that isn't vaccinated and one for a close contact that is vaccinated because again, um, those precautions and those timelines are different. And then also on our, uh, website, we do have a COVID dashboard where you can see sort of like weekly updates of what is the current weekly count of total cases, total student cases, total staff cases and total close contacts.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the floor, uh, if I can from the chair? So the school nurses, they're back in the building?
Yes.
They are, but they're not providing testing?
Right.
Which is a, uh, a matter of negotiation for their contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, I mean, again, I'm actually not privy to those conversations, so I'm unsure if it is a requirement of impact bargaining. The city has mentioned that it is. However, you know, but I, I think there is some question about whether or not it could be considered part of their job description. I don't know, but we are going, we are, um, going to be talking with the nurses directly to kind of get some clarity on where we are with that.
Okay. And just, um, we've talked a lot about the students, um, teaching staff. Is, are there any metrics about, you know, uh, time lost from, on a teacher's standpoint, the time lost in teaching? You know, if the test and stay program, um, was a little more robust as opposed to being tested and then having to stay out for ten days?
So yes, so actually we are, uh, we, we tried to collect that for today is like what are actual days looking like lost? So I was able to get sort of the number of students that I presented to you or that, um, were able to stay in school versus those that weren't. But I can get you the number of, for those who weren't, how many days did they all stay out? And same for staff members, how many staff days have been lost? Because of quarantining, because of, uh, either being positive or just having to quarantine for close contacts? And how many of those are teaching days versus how many of those are support staff days?
Okay. And can we just have this on the, the calendar moving forward until we, you know, get to where we, where we need to be? Uh, Ms. Murray.
So my comment is just a point of clarification. When you were talking about their rapid testing specifically for asymptomatic close contacts, you, um, said students several times, but you never mentioned staff. When that's in full swing, will it be available to staff as well so that they don't have to miss days or is it just a student?
It is available to staff and students. They can fill out the consent, absolutely. We have not had the capacity at this point to test, um, staff. Again, we're hoping to, to build capacity. But yes, it would be available for staff, absolutely.
Uh, thank you. On the subject matter, any other questions with superintendent? With that, um, thank you. Next item.
So item number three, um, is a request approval of a field trip to Johnson and Wales University. So our next item is a request from the EHS Culinary Arts Department to organize a trip to Johnson and Wales University, University's Providence, Rhode Island campus. Specifically, a group of our seniors will take part in a culinary boot camp being sponsored by the Massachusetts Restaurant Association Education Foundation. Our 12th graders will be able to learn valuable information about two educational and career tracks, culinary arts and hospitality management. The number of schools that can attend is limited. And, uh, we are bringing this to you because all out-of-state field trips do come to the school committee for approval. And, um, so we are hopeful that we'll be able to approve this so that Culinary Arts Director Carolyn Parmenter can secure our spot as this is something that we have participated in over the years. Lunch will be served and there is no cost to each EHS or EPS aside from the transportation to and from Johnson and Wales.
I move for favorable action.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, we have a motion before us for favorable action. Uh, on the motion, any questions? Um, seeing none, uh, the motion is to favor action to approve the trip to Johnson and Wales, uh, University of Rhode Island. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. So item number four is to request approval of the Everett Public Schools Medical Emergency Plan for the 2021-2022 school year. In 2012, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed a law enforced by the Department of Public Health that all schools must have a medical emergency plan. And as part of the Everett Public Schools Plan, multiple individuals in each building are trained in cardiopulmonary resuscitation or CPR, first aid and how to use an automated external defibrillator, um, or an AED. You can also see, um, that, uh, at the following schools, we have the following number of AEDs. We have three AEDs at Everett High School, two AEDs at the English, Caverion, Lafayette, Parlin, Webster and Whittier, and one AED at the Adams, Devens, Webster School Extension and the School Administration Building.
Ms. Lambert.
If we were to lay this on the table, um, would the prior year plan be enforceable? We got this a little bit late and so I hadn't had time to review it. So I was gonna make a motion to lay it on the table until the next meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that we would be covered by the prior year plan.
I believe so, but I would actually defer to Charlie, Mr. Obremsky, if we wanted to invite him up to answer just to make sure.
I make a motion to invite Mr. Obremsky.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to the big forward, Mr. Obremsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Mr. Obremsky?
Do you hear me, Mr. Parker?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Last year you did pass a medical emergency plan. So I mean, I'm not a legal expert, but I believe the previous plan would still stay in place.
Thank you so much. I make a motion to lay this on the table just until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second to lay on the table till the next meeting. Uh, on the motion, any questions? Debate?
Actually have a question about it. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that any change from the previous, uh, perhaps, Mr. Obremsky is still with us? Is that any change from the previous year that we approved?
The only change would have been, Mr. McConie, in some of the schools, um, some of the individuals may have changed in the number of people that are certified in CPR or have been trained changed. The rest of the manual is actually the same. Just a number of individuals who may be trained in each individual school. Some people may have retired or left the district. So they were taken out and there was a few others that may have been added.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Murray.
Um, for Mr. Obremsky, as a follow-up question, is, has there been an increase in staffing or a decrease in staff who've been trained?
It's honestly a little bit of a decrease, but not that much, Ms. Murray. Maybe from, maybe down by about two or three percent across the district and the number of people that are trained, but not, not a lot. And there is at least one person trained in every building, including the School Administration Building. And there is an individual trained there. So every building has at least one person. And obviously you could see if you looked at it from the high school, because of the, why, uh, the size of the building, there are a lot of people trained at the high school.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so motions is before, is the lease on the table, uh, for next, uh, next meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. You laid them out on the table till our next meeting. Um, Madam Superintendent, extend it please.
Item number five is to request acceptance of the FY twenty-two McKinney-Vento homeless education grant in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and that's fund code three hundred and ten. This is the first time that we have received this grant. And it will be used to hire staff to work with our undocumented student population, specifically at the high school, as well as to purchase clothing and healthcare packets for homeless students across the district.
I move for favorable action.
Second.
Okay, um, motion is made in second of favorable action. Any questions? Uh, I have one from the chair. Well, you mentioned, um, this is the first time we're receiving this grant. It is a grant, correct? Um, is, is it the first time that this has been available or it's been available in the past? It just wasn't awarded or we didn't apply or?
That's a great question. Um, I would actually defer to either Mr. Obremsky or Ms. Jamp.
Uh, Mr. Obremsky, maybe where you're still, um, before us?
Mr. Parker, this is into the chair and the audience at home. Uh, this is the first time we did receive this grant of, um, thirty-five thousand dollars. It's a combination to work, um, with the homeless population and some foster care students in the migrant population. It's a combination of all three, even though it is listed as the McKinney-Vento homeless.
Okay.
Um, in the past, um, we did not receive it. I'd have to go back to check, Mr. Parker, to see if we did apply for it. I'm honestly not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, it, it doesn't matter. We got the money. That's what matters. Um, and, um, thank you for, you know, for the explaining and who, who was going to target. So with that, we do have a motion before us on favorable action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you have accepted thirty-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Obremsky.
Um, I, I, I don't think we need Mr. Obremsky for the rest of the meeting, so can I entertain him?
Motion to excuse Mr. Obremsky.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to excuse Mr. Obremsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, Mr. Obremsky.
Thank you.
And so the next item of business is bill minimum eight billion people.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of three million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second to approve bills and payrolls to the amount of three million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Careful roll call vote, please, to approve.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine, zero, the negative, you have approved. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of three million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of three million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Careful roll call, please.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine, zero, the negative, you have, um, approved payment of the bills as explained.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in second to adjourn. Careful roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine, zero, the negative, you have adjourned. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.